Good evening, it is 7:03 PM and I hereby call to order the October 2016 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. First, you will notice that Deputy Mayor Emily Major is not here tonight and that is because, as we are gathered here tonight at this very hour in Crotanon Hudson, is a public hearing regarding the US Coast Guard's proposal to create new anchorages along the Hudson River. This public hearing was for oral testimony by invitation only and I gather they invited most of the municipalities. The public hearing was called by State Senators Murphy, Serino, Larkin, and Carlucci and because Wednesday night is our board meeting, you know, I could not go, so I asked the Deputy Mayor to do so and she's down there delivering a statement on behalf of the village that will go in the record essentially about our concerns for increased barge traffic on the Hudson, particularly for Tivoli. As you know, the channel comes very close to our shoreline. We're already having erosion problems on our property, so certainly more barges, more wake is not ideal for us. And also, she's going to speak a bit about the Tivoli bays and what a resource that is and how many people come visit and, you know, similarly, the fragile ecology of that area and whatnot. So, that's why Emily is not here with us tonight. Thank you all for being here, it's nice to have a full room. We will start with a village clerk's report, please Clerk Bruno.
In the clerk's office, we sold 367 trash tags. There were two payrolls processed. Our deputy clerk attended one planning board meeting and going into November in observance of Veterans Day, Friday, November 11th, the clerk's office will be closed.
Thank you Clerk Bruno. Trustees, you will see in your binders minutes from the September 21st public hearing on CDBG, September 21st public hearing on local law C, proposed parking regs, and the regular board meetings minutes also from September 21st. You've had a chance to book these over and is there a motion to approve the, all three minutes together?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Schneider and seconded by Trustee Ezraati. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Moving on to a treasurer's report. I want to thank our Treasurer Bonnie Day for all her work. Out of the general fund, this month, we paid $50,899.16 out of the water fund, $4,583.2 and out of sewer fund, $4,371.10 and out of the expendable trust, $224.13. I just want to point out to the board and the public that that $50,000, $18,850 of it was for the firehouse floor project, which is concluded. And if you have a chance to see it, Tom, are the covers adjusted so far? Pretty nice?
Oh, yeah.
Good. Well, we were very pleased.
You can kneel off of it now.
Alright, great, good to hear. So, that's why we had a big ticket item this month. With that said, is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the treasurer's report is accepted, is there a motion to pay the bills?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
That was Schneider followed by Ezraati. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bills can be paid. Moving on to a zoning report, please, Trustee Ezraati.
This happens every month and I'm surprised.
It is an odd format.
The code enforcement officer issued three building inspections, building permits, inspected three buildings and issued five certificates of occupancy or certificates of completion and he responded to one complaint for a revenue of $860. I noticed this last time and it's showing up again this time. We're putting in a lot of solar panels in Tivoli. I think there were six applications for solar panels last week and some of these certificates of completion had to do with footings for those panels. So, the Northern Dutchess Alliance effort to reduce the cost of solar panels to residents of Northern Dutchess towns apparently was very effective. And that's pretty much the report.
Thank you, Trustee Ezraati. We're going to move on to regular business and permit public comment on the agenda items, but before we do, I want to let you know that we are tabling Agenda Item Number One, which would have been to set a public hearing for our second draft of the parking regs. We have worked on these a lot since last month and frankly, it's, we're not comfortable with, it's not ready yet. We're still, we've introduced a lot of detail on types of trailers, types of trucks, weight categories. We've made some changes to, for example, I think we were feeling not to have any signage for home occupation is something we feel that that is appropriate, so we're taking that out. And we still have some other things that we want to give more thought to, so I expect that we will get this legislation finished in the next couple of weeks and basically everything's going to move back about a month. I think that in November, we'll be setting a public hearing for December and it will continue, but we just want it to be right, so we, we're not ready tonight to move on. And Agenda Items Number Two, Angela Cole is going to get a proclamation tonight and then we have a couple thrilling budget modifications. It's actually our shortest agenda, I think, in a couple of years. Are there any public comments on regular business? Okay. Well, we'll begin with recognition of Angela Cole. On October 6th, the Duchess County Executive, Mark Molinaro, announced the 2016 Art Smith Hudson Awards for Duchess County. So, Art Smith Hudson straddles the river, is a few counties, and each county executive gives out their own awards. And one of our finest Tivoli residents was honored, they gave out eight awards, and the award for Volunteer of the Year for her tremendous work with Tangent Theater was Tivoli's own Angela Cole. Angela is on a plane traveling across the country right now and couldn't be here tonight, but I'd like to ask Tangent Theater to come forward. Michael and Andrea Rhodes are here to accept this proclamation on her behalf. And I'll read what I got and if you'd like to say anything, Angela's not here to defend herself. So, proclamation, Angela Cole, Volunteer of the Year. The Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees congratulates you for being named 2016 Volunteer of the Year by Art Smith Hudson. Your hard work and dedication have helped Tangent Theater thrive and your generosity and commitment to the arts are examples to us all. To be so recognized among the many arts volunteers across Duchess County brings honor to our village. Tivoli thanks you. So, if you can see that this gets to her, we appreciate it and maybe you could tell everyone a little bit about what Angela has done for Tangent.
Angela had kind of stepped forward with the volunteerism. We frankly weren't expecting it. It's something that is deeply needed in any kind of an arts organization. And she originally just started showing up to our readings, to our productions, bringing bottles of water for the cast, for the crew, for the audiences. And I think one of the most important things that she did for us was institute a student ticket program, a sponsorship program, where she went out and solicited citizens to sponsor the ticket prices for any of our shows so that students could come in for free to see it. I think that that's something that is vitally necessary for the arts and especially for the continuation of theater. We ended up having how many?
Forty students.
Forty students over one production. So, we are very much looking forward to implementing that again next year with Angela's help. So, I think it just goes to show that it does take a village to make an arts organization grow, to make any kind of an organization grow. And volunteerism is how we do it because it's an impossible task to do what we do year-round and we are deeply, deeply thankful for Angela. I know that she is very honored to be recognized for what she has done because volunteerism is something that's very important to her and we couldn't be more proud of her. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And we went to the, let's give her a round of applause. And we all got to attend the award ceremony and of course, when Angela got up there, she said it was all about Tangent and about Tivoli, not about herself, so I'm glad she's not here to keep us from honoring her. So, thank you both very much for being here.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you at the theater.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to budget modifications. We are taking $5,000 out of the contingency line and putting $2,057 into traffic control. That is to pay for the radar speed sign, which will be going up next week, something we didn't anticipate buying when we wrote this budget. We saw an opportunity, it was on sale, $2,500 instead of $3,500, so we took that opportunity. And then we also have to put some money into the engineering line. These are funds that are going to be reimbursed through the county grant for the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Evaluation, so when those reimbursement funds from Duchess County come in, the contingency fund will be paid back, so.
You have to pay it first and then you get my.
That's right. Yep. And we have a workers' comp bill that exceeded what we thought by a dollar and 29 cents, so we are moving a dollar and 29 out of the sewer contingency to cover the workers' comp. So, the board has studied these and I think everyone understands them. Is there a motion to adopt these budget modifications?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was moved by Trustee Ezraati and seconded by Trustee Murphy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 16th, 2016, at 7:00 PM preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM here at the Historic Lots to Peister Hall. There will be a regular workshop on November 9th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Moving on to committee reports, Trustee Ezraati, please.
Yes, let me start with the well report. Basically, the Bowlock Well was only pumping one day in the month of September. The McKnight Well was pumping at about 10,000 gallons per day for the entire month. The number two Potts West Well was pumping at about 10,000, almost 11,000 gallons per day. And the number five Potts West Well was pumping on all but five days at about 10,000 gallons. And the four PE Potts East and 10 PE Potts East were pumping at about between 18,000 and 19,000 gallons per day. And the Woodmark Wells were pumping at what is about average for them, between 20,000 and 22,000 gallons per day. So, the water tank was remaining at a high level despite what was a very, very dry month. Usually, I read the rain in inches and it's somewhere between three and four inches, but in September, it was just 1.6 inches. So, if it felt dry to you, it really was. We did have two water main breaks, one in the weekend in, on the 16th, that was on Woods Road, about 200 feet north of Elizabeth Street, and the second one was the following week at 107 Broadway. So, I don't know if that had anything to do with how dry it was or just both pipes that occurred. The well water was tested and met the standards that it is supposed to meet. We've been working on and I need to meet with the directors of the fire department. I have a change in the investment policy for the low sat program, but we've got that one pretty well nailed down, so it's time for our meeting. And we've already heard a little bit about the water and sewer and the fire department got a new, their bays painted and the outside painted, so that's about all we have to report there. I should however, thank the Village of Tivoli for an absolutely spectacular street painting day after three.
Rescheduling, yeah.
Rescheduling. We had 188 kids from Tivoli and Red Hook and we had about 50 people from outlying areas as far as Oklahoma, Maine, Massachusetts, and up in Cooksake and down in Wapinjers Falls. So, we, I call it the diaspora, you know, these are really Tivoli people, they just moved, with the exception possibly of the Oklahoma person. Don't know of anybody from Tivoli who's moved to Oklahoma, but the day was wonderful. I have two stories to sort of fill you in on the quality of the day. When I got from Joe Tobanis, he was picking up his equipment, wrapping cords, et cetera. He watches this little boy about eight walking back and forth with his hand down in front of him. He says to him, "Are you okay?" He said, "Oh, no, I'm so sad." I said, "Why are you sad?" He said, "Because this is the best day and it's over." So, I thought that one was great. The Arts Council always asks for our reach and for whether or not we serve underserved people and various questions like this, and I really loved this one because at the, after the festival is over, we have, you know, bushel baskets that have to go back to Montgomery Place or crates that have to go back to meat farms for the apples. So, I took these crates into the sorting shed at the back of the farm, at the meat farm, and as I walk in, a farm worker who's sorting apples looks at me, big grin, and he says, "Tivoli!" And I thought, "I'm not wearing anything." He recognized the crates, his wife, daughter, and nieces had recognized that there were apples from the place where he works, came home and told him. And then he whips out his iPhone and sorts through it and finds the picture of the square that the wife and nieces drew. It was a lovely one, pink lilies. So, that's what street painting is all about, it's great.
Wonderful. And thanks Susan for all your work.
And thank you. Jeanette came and she helped with passing out chalk and all of you were there in one capacity or another, painting early in the day. We could not do it, especially when we have to change the date. I just throw up my hands and people show up, so that's what makes it happen.
And I don't know if anyone took advantage of this or knew about it, but you know, one of the features of our new website is we were able to do up-to-the-minute notifications of what was going on with street painting as soon as Susan made a call, calls that I would hate to have to make, but say, "Okay, it's going to be next Saturday." It was right up there on the front of the website and, you know, people, people will know now that they can go there for those sorts of, you know, timely updates, which was never something we could do before. And, you know, we're used to having to postpone street painting. I don't know if we postponed it four times that often, but it was a lot of practice, you know, entering those alerts on the website, so silver lining, right?
Are we allowed to say something?
Sure, go ahead.
About street painting? I know that when it was first scheduled for October 1st, we were not going to be able to make it, and then it was rescheduled for the 8th and we were not going to make it. And then when we came, we were away, the 8th to the 9th, and when we came back, we had no idea because we didn't check the website at that point that it was changed to the 9th, so we rolled into Tivoli at about 2:00 in the afternoon and we said, "Oh, it's street painting day today, it wasn't yesterday." So, we were able to catch it and the end of it, we were to see all the artwork and it was, it was nice. It was a nice surprise for us because we thought we were going to miss it, but we didn't.
Wonderful, great.
I don't care.
Okay, Trustee Schneider, please.
I'm just going to read through the Tivoli Village Court Charge Volume Summary Report. Say that fast, fast. Charges are from September 1st through September 30th, 2016. Charges received total 29, charges disposed were eight, and a total of $620.06 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller. That's it. Short and sweet.
Alright, let's see, we have another speeding ticket in here for $200.
We do. I think that I'm really looking forward to reading that report after we put the new sign up that's going to be awarding people of our.
We're going to need your smartphone to trap the stuff, mine's not capable. Trustee Murphy, please.
I just want to let everybody know that the Village of Tivoli and the Tivoli Free Library are putting on a Halloween in costume lip sync battle on Sunday, October 30th from 4 to 6 at the American Legion. All are invited. The focus is on the children. We'll have not only the battle, the lip sync battle, which will be fun for everybody, but also we'll have activities. I'm working on getting mini pumpkins to be painted for the kids, so please come out. You can sign up by emailing tivolievents@gmail.com. Please sign up as soon as possible because it's filling up, so thank you.
Date and time again?
It's October 30th, so the day before Halloween.
Okay.
Right next door here at the Legion Hall. Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Number of fun events coming up. Our trees from that tree grant we won last year and a few other trees, including one that we were replacing because, I won't mention the company, but someone knocked it over and they bought us as a replacement. We're going to be getting those trees next week and so we're going to have a tree planting on Saturday, the 29th. People can meet here at 10:00 AM in front of Village Hall. We're going to have some trees at the park, some on Broadway, some on Montgomery Street, so we'll sort of disperse from here at Village Hall, Saturday, the 29th, 10:00 AM. And the following Saturday, November 5th, we will do the bulbs. We're going to have 800 more daffodils to put in around the village and for that one, we're going to start at 10:00 AM on the 5th at the Santa Fe Parking Lot. We're going to do some, I've gotten permission from the proprietor there to put some in that green strip by the parking lot, which will be nice. We're going to put some way down at the end of Montgomery Street on a little parcel of Villa Jones, sort of the south entrance to the village, and then we'll do some more up by the McKnight Well up there. So, when we get those in, that'll be 2000 in two years, so. And on November 11th at 11:00 AM for Veterans Day, the Harris Smith Post and myself will be participating in a Veterans Day ceremony up on Monument Hill here and we invite everyone to come join us and remember our veterans at 11, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. We've also, I think as we talked about last month, have completed repairs to the World War II monument and we're done some landscaping, do a little more cleaning up and get it looking really nice for Veterans Day. Other improvements recently, since last meeting, the front rails to this building have been installed and painted, so that's the steps and the rails, so done. Things take a while, but we get them done. And the next thing, we're going to be looking at a nicer light fixture. I've never been a giant fan of that light fixture. If you observe it, it's, could be, could be a bit more handsome and now we have to sort of match the quality of our rails, so. You'll also see around the village that many of the fire hydrants have gotten a new coat of paint and that is due to the leadership of our 2016 James Star Clark Citizen of the Year Jackie Zatko, who has organized two groups of volunteers, both pure volunteers, residents who she's gone and said, "Hey, let's do the ones on your street." They say, "Yeah, of course." We've had a number of people, you know, one woman did most of North Road, you know, her house and beyond. And the other group of volunteers that have had the great opportunity and experience of meeting Jackie Zatko are some people who recently received community service here in the village.
Opportunities.
Yes.
Yes.
So, regardless of who painted the hydrants, they're looking good and, you know, we're glad to have Jackie helping the village board, figuring out how to get involved, how to get other people involved in keeping things up around the village. You know, there's always twice as much to do as we can do, so we really appreciate the help from Jackie and the volunteers. And if you got community service in Tivoli and you painted some hydrants, I think you learned something about the community, certainly through Jackie and probably from being out on the street, so it's a good thing. Welcome to Tivoli sign has been repainted and is back up in place and we'll soon have a light put on it. And the other sign that we've been working on is our speed sign, the radar speed sign that we've been talking about for a long time. It's just amazing how many little steps there are. So, it's on the county road, you have to get permission from the county, have to get the county right of way, those guys have to come out, say it's in the right of way, then you have to have the right kind of pole. Poles need to have New York State DOT standard breakaway capacity if they get hit by a car and to don't become rejectable. I've learned a lot of stuff about a sign post this month. And lastly, you got to call, you know, Dig Safe New York, so I expect it'll be up early next week. And as Trustee Schneider reminded us, not only is it going to say the speed of people coming in and "Slow down, please" or "Slow down," something stronger, we'll see. It does do data capture, traffic counts in both directions, numbers of vehicles, time and speed, so it'll, you know, we can pull that data off of there and have a real good picture of when speeding is and that'll help us be more targeted with policing, so. And lastly, as I've said before, it's movable, so it's going to start there, it's going to show up at various places throughout the village, hopefully for many years.
You're going to take a poll with it?
I think we're going to have a different poll in different locations, we'll see. Also, since last time, the handsome chess table has been installed just outside this building. I have to thank RDPW for that, that was a rather awesome installation. It's tremendously heavy and yet needs to be very precise level and whatnot, but it's in, it looks good and there will be a plaque coming for that, but that was donated to the village by a friend of the late Bernie Teager, our village historian, longtime resident and former trustee. So, play some chess down there, also suitable for checkers. And also next week, in this building, the new fuel tanks will be put in downstairs. That's probably going to take most of the week. We'll see if this warm weather continues, we may have interruption in heat in this building briefly, but I'm sure our contract winner, Botini, knows what they're doing. So, these again are double walled 30-year tanks and guaranteed, I mean, hopefully it'll be many village boards before anyone has to deal with those again. So, a lot of good things getting done around here. And with that, if there are any public comments, we've had a pretty short one here, so we've got a lot of time, so we're looking forward to hear from you. Matthew?
Keep it short. The problem of the, from our house up to the Broadway Pizza, nothing's been addressed. The trash is all over the place, the hedge is still growing out into the sidewalk and the trash is getting worse. Trash is getting worse. So, that's all, I just want to know what is, what's being planned to take care of that? I walked by one and I almost got nauseated from the smell from some of the garbage games. You know, not garbage game, the garbage that was on the, on the street. So, that's it, that's my, kudos to everything, all the hard work and everything else, but I'd like to see something better because I walk up there.
Okay.
Have you called the code enforcement else?
I called Steve Cole about a month ago, we never heard back from him. I've talked to Robin a few times when I come get a garbage bag too and, you know, I'm not going to, I don't know what else to do.
Well, we'll have to go down there and talk to the people that live there and ask them to keep their properties cleaner, you know, I mean, you know, we, you know.
You get rats. Anyway, that's it.
Well, same as last month and I'm sorry that it hasn't been improved and, you know. Tom?
Fire Department stuff, Fire Department, Fire Company would like to vote towards for. taking care of the outside of that building and the inside of that floor. I'll tell you, the building looks fantastic. We'll have it open so the people can come by and see it if they wanna check out the floors, see where their money went.
Oh, good, that's great.
It's, uh, it's a long time coming. The other thing I wanna let you guys know is, I wasn't here for the last couple of meetings, but we did not get the JAWS grant that we put in for. They ran out of money. Uh, we were too busy giving out millions of dollars from fire trucks. They, uh, we weren't able to get the JAWS. Last night, I resubmitted our grant and we're asking them for sixty-three thousand dollars, sixty-eight thousand dollars, something like that, for the JAWS grants. We resubmitted, we should hear something, they say, uh, in February.
Is that the same grant program and you can just apply again?
Same grant program, yeah, you can, you can re, if you don't get the grant the first time, because the first time it costs us five hundred bucks to, to go after the grant. If you resubmit, it just costs us fifty dollars to resubmit the grant. So we did that, changed the wording around a little bit and added a little list to it and all of that. And, uh...
Well, best of luck.
We'll see what happens. We've been busy with some car accidents and stuff. Now, it's, it's an ongoing thing. That intersection, down by Annalee Road, which we were tonight and stuff. But, uh, guys doing a great job, and I guess we just wanted to thank the whole board for showing a great interest in that, that building.
Absolutely.
It's built the guys' morale.
Well, I'm very glad to hear that. We appreciate those comments, Tom. I mean, uh, you know, the, the fire department and the rescue squad are just hugely important in this village. I don't believe that they've been, um, always sort of given the resources that they deserve for people who are literally willing to volunteer to keep the rest of us safe. And, uh, you know, this, this board is very committed to supporting, uh, the department and, um, you know, figure out the next thing that needs fixing over there and we'll do it.
No problem.
Sure, yes.
What ever happened with the water? I remember you were doing a study to outsource. What ever happened with that?
So, um, that is ongoing and, once again, I'm gonna say it, near completion. So, uh, that grant first was given to us three years ago, under my predecessor, Brian Cranna. The RFPs happened, an engineer was hired. They began work in September fifteenth. And the first period it was supposed to be done by was, uh, that January, but September, January sixteenth. Series of extensions, series of hangups. There are both, uh, they need to get information from the... First, the engineer goes off and does everything, looks under the hood and sees the condition of all the manholes, treatment plant, water tower, all the pipes, everything.
They did things like use cameras to look at sewer pipes.
So that's been done, the engineering part. Then the other pieces of the study are, what would the, uh, cost models look like if the village retains ownership? And those have been completed. And then what would the cost models look like if it is transferred to the county water authority? And that's where it is right now. Uh, they were here last week getting some more information about just how much time, uh, RDPW spends, say, mowing versus water main breaks. I mean, they need to understand this level of detail to be able to make cost estimates about salaries and time and whatnot. I think we've been in our third extension with Duchess County. My feeling is, I'm like, don't tell the camera. My feeling is they'd like to give you a short one and they'd rather give you extensions and say, "You've got two years to get this done." They'd rather keep doing six-month increments to keep you on your toes.
Do you think it's, it's leaning, do you feel it's leaning one way or the other?
I don't think we're even close to that yet.
On its point.
No, I mean, we wanna wait till we and you have the document. So, uh, currently, it's on schedule to be, like, January, Christmas present, maybe? So, um, you know, there's, there's legal review at each stage, and it's just sort of staggering as a, recently a layperson to realize how long these, um, studies take. But when it's done, which will happen someday, and probably sooner than later, we are all gonna have to really think about having a good water system and who and how we're gonna pay for it. I mean, one way or another, we, the users, are gonna pay for this system, and it's about...
Well, didn't initially, wasn't there initially a grant to replace the water tower?
Uh, we did a bond for that, um, quite a few years ago for a repainting. You know, it's, it's over...
Repair and repainting, yeah.
It's overdue to be repaired and repainted, but once the study and the possible...
So you're hoping it lasts long enough for the study to be done?
Well, yeah, I mean, if the study, for example, you don't wanna paint it if the study says it should just be replaced. Right, so, um, you know, decisions like that. But, uh, the, the, the reality check is, is coming closer and closer, definitely. But thanks for that question. I mean, it's a big, big question that has certainly predated my tenure as mayor and is, that report's gonna be two years by the time it's finished.
We also, we have to have a chance to look at some things like sources of financing. So we're not doing nothing in this period of time.
That's true.
The mayor and, uh, the, our village engineer have introduced intended use plans for both, um, Clean Water Act money USDA, Clean Water Act USDA, uh, Waste Water Authority, uh, grants. And I understand from our neighboring municipality that, uh, that, the opportunity to actually use those funds, if you outsource the, the maintenance of the plant, is something that has improved within the last couple of years. It used to be that you could only apply for the grants as a municipality, not if you're asking the Duchess County.
Right, so about four or five months ago, we took, we checked, and the last, you know, Tivoli had a two thousand nine intended use plan with the Clean Water Drinking State Revolving Fund, and no plan with the sewer. So, you know, while we're waiting, we got those plans updated, two thousand sixteen, and we're on their list, you know? So, um, and that, that, uh, acknowledgement from those funding sources, uh, will be there for the users of the system regardless of who ultimately owns it. So, um, you know, we, we're trying to do what we can while we're waiting for the report to be finished.
Can I have one other question? The traffic light. How many more accidents do we need before we turn it into an actual stoplight?
I have, uh, we've, a number of us have attended the workforce from, for the ninety corridor, which is, was taken, undertaken by the Poughkeepsie...
Duchess Transportation Council.
Council. Uh, and it's an interesting problem, because just changing the traffic signal does not necessarily reduce the accidents. The problem with that intersection is the sight distance. And if you're coming from the south over Clay Hill Road, you can see it and then it disappears. And in that period of time, you can have cars making left turns, standing up.
I know, I was one of the victims.
Yeah, so, so they're, they are looking, the proposal of that council was that actually in the intermediate or long term, I can't remember which it was, that that hill actually be shaved.
Three, four years, I think they said.
Yeah, no kidding.
So the hill by Clay Hill on ninety would be shaved, so you could...
So that you could see.
So you have to say.
Because changing it from the existing blinking light to a light that goes red will cause the traffic to stack up and may actually make it worse. In the same way, the traffic that's coming from around seventy-eight, from the east, there is a problem with the sightline there too. And they've also recommended that, that sightline, because you...
So that's how that'd be shaved too.
That's what happened in this frame.
Duchess County is gonna shave West Curly Corners Hill. So the, you know, as you're traveling west, that approach is, the sightlines are gonna be improved there.
There's gonna be a line of road too or something.
Yeah, and, um, the other thing about that direction is they recommended a change in the speed limit. Uh, they were astounded to discover that the speed limit on, on West Curly Corners Road is fifty-five approaching that intersection. So we should see some action on that. We hope we will see that some action.
And one of the other things they said they were gonna put up on there was a sign that I'm totally against, is cross-traffic-do-stop. I think they're gonna increase the number of car accidents when they put that sign up. I'm gonna officially tell you, I don't wanna record. If they put that sign up, I don't think it matters.
So what, what do you, how do you think that sign's gonna function?
It's, it's gonna be, it's, if I was coming up on that sign from east to west, it's telling me that cross-traffic-do-stop, so if I'm going across ninety, I ain't stopping.
Right, what do you mean?
It makes no sense. The sign makes no sense.
The language of the sign.
They should just, it's, it's bad enough the way it is now, and, and people stopping for the yellow light.
So you think people read that English and they think they're the cross-traffic and they don't have to stop?
That's right. They, they will not stop. They'd stop right now at the yellow flashing light, because they don't have to stop yet. And they tell people to go east and west when they're not supposed to.
It's true, it's an unfamiliar signal.
They totally couldn't screw everybody up if they put that sign there. And I, and I've already said, if they put it up, I'm gonna take it down.
Um, and the last, the last little bit of information to your question is that, um, the DOT, um, does their studies in a three-year period. So that blinking yellow, I think, will be three years this May.
Yeah, three years, I think they said, yeah.
So they're gonna look at the three years since the light was in, the yellow, and they'll do an analysis. But they're very data-driven, it's all statistics, and, you know, the sort of, uh, personal accounts, which, you know, we have millions of, you know? They're really like, what does the data show about kind of accidents, severity, et cetera? So, I mean, they're gonna continue to be staring at it, but they are not ready to put in a red light.
The sad thing, but in many ways the good thing, is that there have been enough incidents at that intersection that it's now considered a high incident location. Uh, for a while, we managed to kill a lot of people at that intersection, but we stretched it out too much, so it never came to be, uh, the right number, but, but it's, it's up there.
Their data collection time is not the right, the right thing. They've done from two oh nine to two thirteen, from two thousand thirteen, two thousand nine, two thousand thirteen. It doesn't take into consideration the accidents that happened, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and all the deaths and accidents that we had prior. I can go way back to nineteen seventy-nine. They'll tell you about all the accidents that happened, I killed a lot of people. But they only look at a specific amount of time here. I've made it aware that, you know, there have been a lot more accidents than that, and that's ones that we go to. There's a lot of accidents right now. There's been about two or three accidents in the last couple of weeks. We don't get called to, fire companies don't get called to. So police agencies that get called have that record of what accidents happened. So how, where they get all of that data from is...
But it's definitely higher than the rate.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's unbelievable. One of the other intersections was Annalee Road and ninety. That was another one. And tonight was a five-car accident, so.
It's a lot more traffic on ninety.
It does a lot more traffic on ninety than ever for some reason.
How many of the people went to see that workshop, to, of that study you did?
The study's been completed, the final document is out. I think you can find it on the Town of Red Oak website.
Yeah, their, their biggest issue and... is cost. DOT, DOT spoke, the lady was there, they talked about shaving the hill and all of that stuff, traffic light. It's cost. They're, if you read, see the thing on, on the webs, uh, on, uh, Panda, whatever it's on, if it's on there, if you listen to what she speaks, everything is money, cost. And at some point, they're gonna have to make the decision, human lives cost a lot more than, than what it costs to put that traffic light or shave that roof down.
But that's actually an improvement, because what used to be the focus was, um, the speed of traffic on ninety, that making sure that it didn't slow down the, the pace.
They paved the road. We went from a highway to a superhighway now. They can only use faster now, so it's like...
They're, they're, now more focused on, their, their languages, that's why.
I wanna get back to the cross, uh, traffic does not stop. I mean, I guess I would never underestimate people's capacity to be foolish and confused, but, uh, you know, you're pulling up to a stop sign and underneath it says, "Cross-traffic does not stop." I mean, that, you just ignore that stop sign above it? That's for you?
They don't stop now, so what the heck's the difference? They, that's not gonna be right underneath the stop sign. That's supposed to be a sign further back that says, "Cross, cross-traffic does not stop." So if I'm coming downhill and I see it, "Cross-traffic don't stop," and I'm going across, I ain't stopping.
I saw one illustration where it's actually on the same sign post in their report.
No, I didn't see it, it was on, on, I didn't see it.
So you think it's further up?
I think it's further down, it wasn't right, where the stop sign. Doesn't matter anyway, it'll stop anyway.
I'd like to see not a four-way stop than that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that, that should be a four, maybe a four-way stop, it'd probably be better than anything else. But anyway, then they talk to the, the roundabout, then they put a roundabout in.
Oh, God forbid.
None of her, I don't think there's enough room for that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of issues, I mean, they, they did their homework and stuff, but basically the bottom line comes down to the cost. And, and that's, they, they stress that, I mean, it was the cost.
Other comments for the board? Karen Cleveland?
Uh, I, I was thinking about Matthew's comments about the sidewalks, because I know there are a lot of people who don't use the sidewalks even over there. And I served on the master plan, and one of the focuses of that was that Tivoli is a walking village, and it should be a walkable village. And I think that, um, you do a newsletter, that maybe people needed, need to be reminded that sidewalks are being used. There are many of them that have overgrowth of, of vegetation on it. You can't even walk on a sidewalk. On top of the garbage cans that are on it. And I think maybe people need to be reminded that that's something that needs, you know, focus on the walkable village. We want people on the sidewalks, we don't want them on the streets.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with John had. They gotta be made to walk on sidewalks. There are, there are laws, and I've come up the road all kinds of days, times, nights, when I'm out going on calls and stuff, people walking in the middle of the road. And, you know, the last time I came up, I just rolled down the window and I said, "Do you know what the sidewalks are used for?" And then I got told to go, "Those are game boards and stuff," whatever. But the thing is that, bottom line is, there's a law, maybe it should be enforced of it. But a few people pay some jaywalking tickets, they don't get to that here.
Well, first you have to make sure they can walk on the sidewalk.
Exactly, and the sidewalk, many of the sidewalks that I walk on are too dangerous for me to walk on. And so I walk on the street.
Some of them have cars parked on them.
Yeah, a lot of the sidewalks are broken up. That's another thing, cars are parking on sidewalks.
Yeah.
That's, that's, I mean, I see that coming into town.
Yeah, we've had tickets, we've had those tickets written, but not enough, clearly. And it's new people every year, as you know, right? I mean, we're really frustrated about the sidewalks. It's just, it's a money question more than anything. I mean, we walk the same sidewalks and they're old and the village of Tivoli, all of us together, have not kept up with them. And, um, you know, it's a very hard thing to find funding for, actually. People like to fund the more exciting stuff.
Yeah, they, they work for the whole...
Does anyone know how they did it?
I don't know.
Did you know? I mean, the other thing we can do is, you know, it's, it's difficult under a tax cap, you know, and we don't wanna raise anyone's taxes anyway, but, you know, you, we could say, okay, we're gonna, you know, tighten the belt this much so every year we can spend ten thousand dollars and do fifty feet of sidewalk. I mean, it seems silly to do, you know, because they're just economies of scale.
By the time we finish, we start all over again.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's very challenging when we think about it.
That's how it was done though. I mean, Montgomery Street was the last one that had the sidewalks finished, where they did the curving on Montgomery Street, but not all the way.
That was a killer, that, that screwed that a little bit.
But, uh, I mean, within our, within our budget, I mean, it's, there's, I mean, we might be able to squeeze out fifty feet a year, which, I, I, we can do that if that's what we all wanna do, you know?
Are there grants?
That's what I'm saying. We've looked at so many grants and they're just not...
Well, we've got one, right, to redo the sidewalks on Pine Street.
You're gonna do that?
CDPG, that's a...
Yeah, that's the most recent one.
Yeah.
That's a start.
So, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, trustee Israele. So the, uh, Pine Street Phase Two, we did our, um, public hearing on that last month, so that's being submitted, uh, tomorrow, right, clerk? Yes, uh, 'cause it's due Friday, and, you know, we'll keep our fingers crossed with that. We, we put in to do basically sidewalk from, you know, all along Pine Street to North Road.
Good.
So, that's all of it. I mean, we did get a CDBG twenty-eleven, I think, which let us do nine hundred feet of sidewalk around, but, you know, it's, it's really challenging to get the funding, but...
And if you'll recall, since, if we, we did, um, Montgomery Street, when we put in the new water line there, there were some issues there because we discovered a sister network, didn't know it was there. Then we repaired the sidewalks along Broadway, particularly bad stretches of it. I, I think there has been something about sidewalks in almost every budget. So, it's costly. There's a lot of miles of sidewalks, so we...
If you really look at it, if you really look at it, Susan, there's not that much sidewalk that hasn't been touched in a while. I mean, you're talking about a stretch up North Road, and the lower part of Broadway going down to the bridge are probably the worst. Woods Road used to have a sidewalk, disappeared. People took the slate, or the, the.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. It used to go all the way up to the church.
But it certainly won't cost us anything to have a campaign in the water bill, village awareness, you know, get your hedges trimmed back, you know, garbage cans, parking, I mean, that, we can make a big issue of that, and I hope you will help us with your neighbors.
That can be the creative work for it, so we need to do that.
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other comments for the board? Any comments from the board? Well, I look forward to getting a report from the deputy mayor on the meeting in Croton, and we want to thank you all for being here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Everybody at once, right?
Schneider, Ezrawi, any, any discussion, all in favor? Aye. It is 7:54, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight, thank you very much.